Secretary will call the meeting in order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
As customary, we'll observe a moment of silence. I'd like everyone to keep in thoughts and prayers the Bazanson family. Longtime employee Lonnie Bazanson recently lost her mom Edith, Edie Blake, mother-in-law of longtime selectman Brian Bazanson. So please keep them in your thoughts and praises during the moment of silence. I'd like to announce this meeting is being recorded and televised by WHCA. I'd seek a motion for approval of bill and payroll warrants.
Still moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seek a motion for acceptance correspondence in the Reed file.
Still moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public forum, if anyone would like to speak about anything that is not on the agenda. Okay, seeing it's a little past 6:30, we have an executive session to go into pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 83, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation relative to a Whitman Police Union member as an open body may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body as declared by the Chair. We will then enter into a second executive session at 6:45 PM pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 1, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than the professional competence of an individual. We will be discussing extended sick leave. We will then convene and reopen open session.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Voice vote?
Yes.
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 And I will vote yes for the executive session. The first public hearing scheduled for this evening is 7:10. It's a public meeting regarding the application of Mary Fries doing business as All-Star Transports for a livery license and livery driver's certificate on the premises located at 56 Vincent Street. This will be subject to proof that the vehicle has been registered with the Mass RMV as one to be used for a mass livery vehicle and an updated certificate of insurance and license fees. Ms. Fries, do you just want to come up and have a seat and just kind of explain what you'd be doing?
Hi, I'm Laurie Fries. So, yeah, I've been doing this work for other people for almost 20 years, and I decided I want to do it on my own, you know, to provide livery services for local communities so that they're going into Boston, to the airport, and not a state whenever they need to.
Okay, and it's All-Star Transports, is this the name of your business?
Yes.
Okay, so understanding that, again, this is subject that we receive proof that the vehicle has been registered with the Mass RMV as a livery service vehicle. We received an updated certificate of insurance and license fees. Have we received?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I just got the vehicle.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm in that process. So first I had to get approved through here before I could go to the next town. So I need the town thing, and I know I think I have like 60 days to do that.
Yep, once we get that back and once we take a vote this evening, you will then be able to, you'll get your license.
So I can take that to my insurance company. Yeah.
We won't issue until we have everything, but once you take the vote, we can get you what you need, I would think, for the next step to say that it was wired.
I have the vehicle, I just need the next step to get the livery plates, okay? I don't know if I get the livery plates unless I have, I've been approved through the town. So it's just that whole, the registry insurance, that whole...
You won't get, I believe you don't get your certificate until you'll get a letter that we, the board has taken a vote and approved it, but we are requiring to see confirmation of that it's registered as a livery service vehicle.
Absolutely.
Laura will take care of it.
So, once you take the vote this evening, just give Laurie O'Brien, Ms. O'Brien, a call tomorrow, and she will get you the proper paperwork that you will need, assuming we vote, which I'm not going to see an issue.
Okay.
So I will seek a motion.
I'll take that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, here we go. Okay. First page of the agenda. The next public hearing, and I'm sorry for the delay, business ran long, so I'm sorry to keep anyone waiting. As a public hearing pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 157, in the Town of Whitman general bylaws, Article 27, in regards to a complaint filed by Patricia Parent of 220 High Street and Erin and Joseph Conley of 226 High Street against dogs allegedly owned or harbored by Jean Cogger of 221 High Street. I will now call this hearing to order. Good evening, this hearing has now been called to order. The Whitman Board of Selectmen is holding a hearing regarding, as a result of complaints filed and dated March 19th and March 22nd of 2023, by Patricia Parent and Erin Joseph Conley in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 157, and Chapter 110 of the Town of Whitman general bylaws. The purpose of this hearing is to determine whether dogs owned by Jean Cogger of 221 High Street are dangerous, a nuisance, or neither. A determination of the hearing outcome will be made in writing after the hearing, after this hearing has been conducted by the board.
Yes, sir.
Rules of the hearing.
Yeah, Peter.
Before starting the hearing, I want to introduce myself and explain the rules which we will be following this evening. My name is Randy Lamatina, I am the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, and I will be presiding over the hearing. It is my job to enforce the rules of the hearing. I will also swear in all witnesses wishing to speak, I will hear all testimony for the purpose of gathering relevant facts, and will make a determination concerning the complaint after the hearing has ended. The determination will be available, I would say, within a week by writing?
A week after the board votes.
Okay, a week after the board votes. At the Town Administrator's Office, it will also be mailed out to all involved parties. The rules we will use today are pretty straightforward. First, all persons who wish to speak must sign in, which we've already done. Each must provide his or her name, address, email, and telephone number, which I believe has already been established. Second, all those wishing to speak must be sworn in by me. We will conduct a swearing, a general swearing in momentarily. I will acknowledge all, for the record, I'll acknowledge all documents previously provided in this matter. All speakers will be called by me and given a lot of time to speak, roughly five minutes or so. If a speaker feels she needs a little more time, he or she may ask, and the board will Animal Control Officer Ms. Laura Howe will speak first, and we'll relate the written report. All other speakers will have, like I said, about five minutes, and we'll ask all other speakers to keep your comments directly to the issue. The order of speakers will follow the list after the animal control that has been signed in. We will get to everyone. When you come up to speak, please just state your full name and your address. Please avoid any obscenities, threats, fighting words, defamatory remarks are going to be strictly prohibited. The Chair and the members of the board, and the Chair may ask questions of each speaker, and members of the audience must remain silent, be respectful, while all others are speaking. Any outbursts, you will be asked to leave the hearing. Okay. I would ask anyone wishing to speak, please stand up and raise your right hand. This will be a time, if you don't get sworn in, you will not be able to speak. So if you think you might want to speak, it's best to get sworn in now. Okay. Please repeat after me. I swear that the testimony I am about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the I am acknowledging that we have received a complaint dated March 19th, 2023, from Patricia Parent. I'm also acknowledging that we have received a complaint from Eric and Joseph Conley dated March 22nd, 23. Everyone, we've sent out certified notifications of this hearing properly. The animal control officers are here present and will speak this evening. The board will now begin to hear testimony. I would first call Animal Control Officer Ms. Laura Howe.
Laura Howe, 185 School Street, Whitman. I'm here because in October, I had met Ms. Cragor and her partner, Raul Cogger, sorry, and she voluntarily had surrendered nine of her dogs. She had had 13 at the time, a female that had puppies. The puppies were at that point five months old. They did not have their rabies and spayed or neutered or anything. So she voluntarily surrendered them without any problems. Animal Rescue League took custody the following day, it was arranged, and all of them were placed out spayed, neutered, behavioral assessment, up to date on their shots and their rabies. A few days later, we learned that there was four dogs left at the premise. Because where this was not a search and seizure, there was no court involved, we had only known that there was three, but then we quickly learned there was four. We explained that they needed to go and get a license for a kennel, because this town is three, not four. And how things worked was that eventually we caught four of the dogs, all four, and I held them until they got their rabies shots. So at least the residents in the town and their animals would be safe if they got scratched, as well as Jean's dogs as well, because rabies cannot be taken, testing cannot be done on a living animal. And then things just progressed from there. They're running free, I'm sure they would admit and understand on a regular basis. It could be as much as every day. I have heard different reasons, I understand them, but they have to, animals can't protect themselves. We have to sometimes go to extremes to protect the animals, and in this case, this is an extreme case. I don't know if you would want to hear now or later what mine and Joe, and Joe can certainly speak for himself, but our recommendations would be and always have been to have a secure kennel floor, like cement. I do realize they don't own the property, it's rented, so I don't know if that's feasible, but anything else they can dig under, and something with a roof because they climb over everything. Electronic fencing is what I was told last time that I released them, that they were getting. They could follow up if that has been done yet. And I really do not know. I can attest to that they take very well care of their dogs. Their dogs are not in any type of bad situation other than roaming free throughout the neighborhood all the time, which is dangerous, not because they're so much dangerous aggressive dogs, because they're not, but the mentality of a pack dog is quite different than one or two dogs, as well as they live on a very busy street, and, you know, somebody could just slam on their brakes. I know they would be devastated if their dogs were injured, so I'm hoping we can find a solution. And certainly I can respeak if there's anything, or you can ask me any questions.
Are you aware of any time that the dog has bit another dog or bit another human?
No, those were two dogs that were, well, it was one dog, excuse me, but two incidences of a dog they no longer own and have not owned that dog since Joe and I were alerted to the 13 dogs in October.
Right now, they own how many dogs?
Four.
Three puppies.
Technically, they are puppies, but because they're over six months now, they were five months in October, so, you know, maybe roughly nine months now. So they do qualify for being older than the six months of age.
All right. Our other ACO, Joe Kenny, I said, Joe, did you have any more to add?
It's pretty much the same thing, there's not too much to add to it. Good summary.
Okay. Then I would call the next speaker, Mr. Joe Conley.
My name is Joe Conley, I live at 226 High Street. Pretty much what Laura said, we living right across the street have witnessed multiple incidents when the dogs get loose without a leash, running freely, tying up traffic. They for some reason or another hang out in the middle of the street a lot when they get out. I find it very dangerous, because I always wonder why there's a backup down High Street of traffic, and sure enough, there's a dog in the middle of the street. So I just, you know, I know Whitman has a leash law, and I don't understand how they can't keep these dogs contained. I think that, I think that if, if I were a frail elderly person, I would have gotten, I would have at least been knocked over. The two dogs on two occasions came at me, very friendly, I want to stress, they're very friendly dogs, but they come right at you, and they're big, strong dogs, even though they're puppies. And they came right up, jumped right up on me, didn't, weren't vicious or anything. But if I were frail, it wouldn't be good. It would not have ended good. So that would be my concern. I don't, I don't, my kids have grown, if I had little kids, this would be a whole different ballgame for me. But that's really what I want to add, I mean, my wife was attacked going to the mailbox, same thing. They come right at her, jump right up on her, you know. And when they, when they get out, they go flying right across the street. So my fear is one of them, or two of them are going to get hit. It hasn't happened yet, but it will, eventually it will. So, like Laura said, my suggestion would be an electric fence to keep them contained. And I think that would stop all this. That's really all I've got to say. I know there's, there's a young family that lives down behind them, and I'm not sure they're here tonight, but they have, they could probably say a few words too. And they've got the little kids down there, so, thank you.
So, not for you, Mr. Conley, what size dogs are we talking about right now?
And they can correct me if I'm wrong, I would say they're between 50 and 70 pounds pounds. They're very muscular.
Forty, 50 pounds, the puppies.
And the mother is about 70.
I'll try to get some pictures and show you if I want.
Yeah, so the mother is a bigger one.
And not to speak out of turn, but the family that Mr. Conley speaks of, I believe, is at 173 Pine Street. The dogs, their land, or the people they rent from, it goes kind of out back, so they know where the other dogs live that play with them, and they are frequently, as a matter of fact, when I get a call, I don't even go down High Street, I go down Pine Street because I know they're going to be playing with that dog in the yard. And it's most often that that woman calls me directly to tell me the dogs are in the yard. The issue with Joe and I that I didn't address is that they know us. They know us very well. So they take one look at us, and now it's more of a danger when we go, because they split the scene, and they run in every direction, so they separate.
They usually run.
Yeah, and they, and now they separate, so the dog that wasn't running across the street is now going this way. I, by the grace of God, had a family that lives two doors up from that woman, who went out with treats that I provided. Well, I held one of the dogs to go find the other two, because they would not come to me, and they came right to them. So it's a disadvantage as being animal control officers, when you pick up dogs multiple times, because they know you. And I know you've heard this said a lot by other ACOs, we don't chase dogs. I never liked that statement, because it's your job to go out, but there is some truth to that. As soon as you know you have a runner, it is absolutely not in anyone's best interest to go chase that dog. That creates a very bad hazard to the public. The dog is running in fear, then it'll bite in fear, and it will dodge into traffic unexpectedly. So Joe and I worked very hard to try to have that not happen. But the gentleman is right, and he did not agree to this very sad fact, that a dog on High Street, on, right there, was killed. And when I first heard of it, my first thought was it was the High Street dogs. And it was not, it was a dog that never gets out, and got out one time, so it can happen. That's...
Were you done, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up would be Ms. Parent.
Hi, I'm Patricia Parent from 220 High Street. We've had several encounters with the dogs. I have grandchildren, and I, you know, like, my granddaughter is putting her baby in the car, and the dogs jump right in the car with her. So I just really don't want them to be doing that, you know, she's, it's a baby. And I have other young grandchildren too, and, you know, I keep my dog on a leash all the time. I frequently take a walk, you know, and I was going by their house all the time, and my dog's always on a leash. And I was just about ready to come home, and their dogs came out at us, me and my dog, and they did get my dog. And when I, I went to kick the dog, because I would get it away from mine, and I fell. But, you know, I can't have that happen. My dog won't even walk across their front yard anymore, on the sidewalk anymore. She shakes. She's only 10 pounds. You know, it's really not fair for us to not be able to use our neighborhood, you And I feel bad for them, they look so happy when they're running around, you know, it's like, but somebody's going to get hurt.
Now, you just said something that they got your, got your dog.
Yeah, one of them had my dog in its mouth and was shaking her.
But there was marks.
Yeah. She didn't get hurt at all. No, other than the fact that they're out all the time.
Excuse me, is it Mr. Raul?
Yeah.
Okay, at the beginning of the hearing, we have some grammar, you're going to get your chance to speak, you're going to get to, both of you are going to get to be able to stand up and say what you want, but we really don't need the comments, okay? I appreciate that, you know, because you're going to get shown the same respect when you get up there to speak, okay? Thank you.
I think that's about it.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Mark Parent, if you'd like to speak.
My name's Mark Parent, live at 220 High Street. I haven't had a personal encounter with the dogs, but they are all over the neighborhood. They're friendly enough, but 40 pounds, 45 pounds, they're a stout breed, and if these dogs run at you, they are going to give you a jealous if they jump up on you. And if, thank God, it hasn't happened to a little kid. And there's a lot of kids that walk by there coming home from the Conley School and the middle school. That's about all I got to say.
Is it Mr. and Mrs. Butterfield? I'm sorry, I just can't, did I get the last name correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, Joan Butterfield, 231 High Street. I just want to start by saying the dogs are very nice, they're very friendly, but they're strong, they jump up. Sunday, we were sitting in our backyard, and the dogs were loose, as always, like every day, and jumped over the fence in my yard, came onto the deck, and came down into our pool area, we're in, on the pool cover, and then managed to slide underneath the fence and get out, and they did this like four times on Sunday. And my, one of my, my son was home one day and saw them get hit by a car, because they are constantly stopping traffic.
That was actually another pit bull, three doors down.
Oh, all right.
And that was very confusing to me as well, I had to do an investigation on it, but then I caught that pit bull and found the owner.
All right, well, I didn't know that, but...
That's okay, I was dumbfounded at first.
He saw a dog get hit?
Yes, and it is white and very similar in markings. I had it in my vehicle, and I understand, I just wanted you to know.
Okay, that's fine, as long as the dog was all right. I'm concerned about the dogs too, because they're running loose, it's going to happen, they're going to get hit eventually, and the kids walking by, and it's just not a good situation. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Kleiman, Joe Kleiman?
You know, everything's been covered that I was going to say, I don't have anything else to add.
Adam Casey, 173 Pine Street. It's my yard that Ms. Howe has alluded to that...
Oh, I've only met your wife, I apologize.
That's okay, no problem. Again, reiterate, very friendly dogs, they're puppies, they're, I never feel that they're dangerous at all, but they, so I fixed all the holes that they were getting into under my fence to keep them out. I have a dog who just loves playing with them, so they love coming over and playing, and it's, it's nothing bad, it's just, there's been two things that I haven't liked. One was on Easter, my kids, my daughter, who's eight, she's not very big, was playing on the trampoline, and the dogs were not letting her out, so, not that I was worried, but, you know, a little bit. So I went out, and they jumped on me, and, which was, I had my Easter clothes on, so it was a little frustrating, but I got her in the house. And they have jumped on my son and scratched him a little bit, nothing bad. Minor little scuffles with my dog, but just part of playing, but the fact is that they're always there. And then, so I fixed all the holes, and I witnessed these dogs just leaping over my four-foot fence, I could not believe it, they're just so strong and athletic, and, and so, you know, it's just frustrating because they're all, they're there a lot of the time. It's gotten to be the fact that they like to play at my house, and I understand that for dogs. Again, they're not mean dogs, but they are dogs, and, you know, I do have kids, so I just, I just hope that we can resolve this and have them a little more contained. I know it's probably really tricky, and you guys are over all the time getting them, it's not, it's like, it's friendly, it's not, I'm not, you know... It's not, it's like, it's friendly, it's not, I'm not, you know, here to accuse or anything like that. It's just, it's just the situation, so that's all.
Thank you. Ms. Erin Conley?
I think everything has been covered. I, I happened to witness when my neighbor was walking her little dog. And I feared, I mean, she went, she went down. She was yelling and trying to get the dog off of her dog. So the other part of this I worry about is we have a lot of elderly that walk their dogs up and down High. If they were ever to be pounced on, they're going down, and they're going to break a hip or whatever. Just a category that we hadn't touched on, the elderly that walk their dogs up and down High Street.
Mr. Raul?
I do understand that they do get out. I try my best. I mean, I put a fence in, my employees put a fence in. They didn't do it tight enough. I went out there, told them to do it again, do it again. They go underneath, so then we resolved that. Now they climb over, they jump over. Today, I was up back there putting another fence. So instead of a six-foot fence, I'm going up higher to make it real tall. I'm going to put another fence, cut it in half, budging it up and make it 10 feet. So I started doing that, and I'm going to put bars on top. And we did call, she has the number, that I did have electric fence for Spirit, and used to, and other dog. But Spirit sits in the yard usually. She doesn't leave. What? She used to leave, but she, she used to do the same thing as a puppy. Once she got an adult, she stays in the yard most of the time, not all the time. With other dogs, she'll go with them. We have contacted the company three, four times. And it's not that I don't have the money. I own a landscaping company. They're not calling, they're busy. I mean, there's not much I can do. I can call another company, but it's going to be the same thing. I was thinking of putting railroad ties on the bottom of the fence, even though there's a bar, and string, and nail in on. But they're escape artists. I mean, I don't do this on purpose. On my porch, now I keep them on my porch. I have my couch against the rear, so they can't even get out. I bought lattice, so there's wires on my porch, there's rails, and I took the lattice, put it in between, so they wouldn't go through somehow to get down. I told Jean, I'm going to the bathroom. She goes over there. I don't even barely let them out on the porch now. I mean, they, she'd go bathroom in the house. I'm like, Jean, I don't even care right now. Said I'm going to the bathroom until I clean it up, until they come here with the electric fence. That sucks. So then I go out there with four dogs, and I sit there, I'm having a cigarette, and I'm sitting there, close the door, and I think they're going to be fine. Here I go to turn around, and I'm like, what the hell? How the hell did you get out again? And now I go out there, and I sit with them. But they do escape. They're very friendly. The day she fell, what happened is I was in the garage. I have two doors. One door opens, another door opens. The yards in the back, they were all on the porch. And somehow, I wasn't thinking, I open that door, I open that door to do something, they got out. But as soon as they ran, I went out there, and I heard her, hey, get away from the dog. People, what she did, I think, is as soon as she saw the dog, get away from the dog, get away from the dog, and the dog's friendly. And I actually tried helping her out. I sat there, I said, I'm sorry, I was in the backyard on the porch, I opened the door, my mistake. She yelled at me, she yells at me all the time. I don't do it on purpose, they get out, they're escape artists, I don't know. I try and get the electric fence. I am going to put the middle fence, cut it in half, and raise it. Right now, I got one section. I was doing it before I came here today. And I'm going to do it tomorrow. And any other ideas, let me know.
Most of the electric fences, and I'm working with the company, I've had four appointments, but they're short-staffed and busy. And I actually called the guy that actually put our electric fence in himself, but he moved to Kentucky, so he's no longer with the company. So I think the guys are short-staffed, and we're working, I'll be calling another company pretty soon with all of the equipment that we have.
Do you just want to come up to the mic? Thanks. You can stay up there if you both want to speak.
All of the equipment that we have belongs to that company, so I gave them, you know, the opportunity to fix it. So I'd say within a week, I'll have somebody, if they don't come, they have one more opportunity to do what they should do.
Yeah, I have one or two collars. I also have the wire still up. I have the box.
But they also need to be trained to the fence, so that's their job. I don't like to bring them over to the fence because I don't like it, so.
I do agree on everything else.
Yeah, where.
With the dogs, but they're very friendly.
We do, we are human. We do have the same thoughts and concerns that everybody else here in the room have. The elderly, the children, them getting hit. We do, we go right after them when they're out. We don't like leave them and sit in the house, smoke our cigarettes, drink our beers, and be like, oh, the dogs are out. No, that's just not how it is. So I don't want people thinking that and making their decisions. And I do feel bad. When the neighbor fell, I was in the house, I wasn't properly dressed to run out and help out because I was in my pajamas, so I don't usually run out like that, so.
So you do have an electric fence?
I do have one in place. It's the panel. I don't know how to program it, so I don't want to try and do that myself. So the panel had come off, so I want them to do that. And then the three little ones, they don't have collars, and they haven't been trained. Spirit does. Spirit wouldn't even leave to go to the vet. I actually had to have the vets come to my house because she won't leave because of the fence.
Yeah, the way I had it in the front, as soon as you open the door, because it is a street, and like, eight feet is my door, the fence, electric wire is like right outside the step, open the door. So Spirit, one day, went out there by mistake.
On my way to work.
On my way to work, and she got, eh, so she never went out again. Actually, I had to call the doctors to come there, pay extra money for appointments and stuff. So she was trained very well. She got zapped. So the wire's still there and everything, I'm just trying to get a hold of her.
And just, and what it is, is three puppies, they all have their own little brains, and they're all like in cahoots with each other. And like, if one doesn't figure it out, the next one does, is how I see it. They're just little, but like I said, we work hard. Now, we sit out there with them. In a minute, I'm just going to chain them to the railing with the chains that they can't. My fear was if they jumped, are they going to hang themselves? You know what I mean? I don't really want to chain them. So we have it enclosed there, and he's working on, he's out there all the time trying to figure it out, so.
I did go out and bought out the wire with the leash, 10 feet, and so by taking it around.
For a runner.
We went out and bought four of those. I'm afraid of those because they can show, they'll get on something. So I've hesitated to put those up. I still have those brand new. I think I'm just going to do the fence and wait.
The fence will be fine. That works.
And keep them in the house, but they're escape artists. If they do get out, I'm trying my best. I don't know what to say.
And another reason, another reason we had.
Let me ask a question.
Hold on one second, sir.
Anybody else walks their dogs on a leash in the neighborhood, and they bring them in their house?
Sir, hold on one second, and I'll let you, I'll let you come up and make a statement. Hold on. Hey, 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 hey!
Let him play, man.
We're not doing, we're not doing this, okay? I have a question. Are we talking about one adult dog and three puppies?
Yes.
All right, so it's not three puppies? I mean, four puppies?
No. Mother and three, seven months old, approximately.
How large is the full-size dog?
She's like, she's like 60.
I have pictures.
We have pictures from today of them.
Mr. Kane?
I'm not confident that they can negotiate this in a way that's safe for the dogs or for people around them. And I, I feel like, I like the recommendation from Ms. Howe. But again, I'm not confident that they can be able to implement the recommendation in a short amount of time that's going to keep the dog safe and, and people safe. You know, so I don't know if we can come up with a way for, in a very short amount of time, something that's overseen by the animal control officers to, they can inspect it and make sure that it's a system that's going to work. Otherwise, I'm really, I'm worried that the dog's just going to get hit by a car soon, and that'll be that, which is terrible, so.
Sir, if you'd like to come up, you can.
I just have one question. Why don't you be at the microphone?
You have to be at the microphone. And you just got to state your name and address and.
Ron Butterfield, I'm at 231 High Street. Everybody else in this room that has dogs, take their dogs out on a leash and walk the dog, and then put them back in the house. Why can't they do that? Simple question. They don't.
That's a very.
The other day, those dogs were in my pool area chasing my cat. I went over to the yard, I don't know how many times. They were in the backyard. They knew the dogs were loose. They had no idea where the dogs were.
It's a.
They can put them on a leash, they can walk the dog, and then they can put the dog back in the house. The dog's not going to escape. Simple as that.
You're absolutely right. It's a very, it's a rational question. I mean, Whit, you've just, you've got to come up, Laura. You know, Whitman does have a leash law. So how many times have you, have you had to take these dogs back to the?
That's a loaded question because I don't have a facility to keep them in. I don't have a vehicle to drive them in, and I don't have a proper way. But Frank and I and Joe and the counsel had discussed what your findings may or may not be, a way we could do a fine from here on out.
Ms. Howe, I asked you how many times you've had to take the dogs?
And I'm giving you my honest answer. These dogs are loose one to two times a day, or at least three to four times a week. I can sometimes not get to the dogs before they've been returned. We were not even aware there was 13 dogs in October because people that live in the neighborhood and know ill intent meant, because it may not have been these people, but returned these dogs. When I went with an officer, actually, I sent the Animal Rescue League and Joe originally, and then they were given two weeks to comply. When I went back, within 10 minutes, they voluntarily surrendered, and they were moving. They had proof and provided proof to Frank and I of them buying a home in another town. That did not go through, but as of January, they were supposed to move. Because this is a rented residence, it also makes it difficult. I would give you guidelines that I would recommend, like such as liability insurance, putting the cement slab down. You know, as you probably know, you can't build a over-six-foot structure in this town without getting a building, you know, permit to do so. I find that you could put a four or five foot and put a roof on it, and you would be fine. They are escape artists, I agree. I have given many instructions on how they could keep them safe. I feel they need a trainer at this point because they do not know anything at all. So that makes it harder. I actually really am less concerned if they're 10 pounds or 100 pounds because a Chihuahua is more dangerous than possibly these dogs. What bothers me and concerns me is that we've been here since October, Joe and I, trying to get everyone on the same page because we, this is very unique. You don't usually have a whole room of people that agree these dogs are friendly. And, you know, they are, but they're getting older. And as animals mature, they get their, for lack of a better term, sexual desires, and their behaviors change. One of them right now is running around in heat. What happens if a dog in the neighborhood is not neutered? And then there will be a dog fight because other behaviors have come into play. I never say something by law, under oath, of what could happen. I am saying things that will happen because of animal behavior.
I'm going to stop for a second. How many times a week do you get called out for these particular dogs?
I would say at least three to four times a week. I would give you my records, but they've all disappeared. So I, my hands are more tied.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
I should have added that I apologize. I am personally, on my own free time, willing to work with them. I've told them about the rebar. I've told them about the wire going around that they speak of, even though he called it string. I've told them about many different things. I would personally work with them to secure their facility. I could not solicitate a hearing, and I could not pull a hearing because I cannot be lead investigator and prosecutor. So this is why it has taken so long to come here today.
And I will say that there was a little lapse in getting the, the electric fence because we were going to be moving. So we didn't, at that time, we were supposed to be moving within two weeks, and when that fell through, then we had to. So we didn't get the electric fence installed there. We were going to be taking that with us. So we didn't really hassle the guy about coming out until the house fell through, so. But we are still actively looking for a new place to live.
Please stay there for a minute. I have a couple questions for you.
Sure.
Do you have the setup for the electric fence?
I do. I have everything for the electric.
Right. And what you need is to have that activated, is that what you're saying?
I need to make sure that the panel is properly set for them so they don't get overzapped, underzapped, so that it's the correct, and that the dogs are trained to.
If I'm not mistaken, because my brother-in-law has that in his house in Hanson.
You have collars.
All right. They have to wear a collar.
They wear a collar.
And if they go past the gate, they get a shock, and then all of a sudden, they realize.
They get warned prior to getting to the, to the invisible fence. So they get a warning, and then they back off.
So that fence area that you, that you have, the electric fence, I've been by your house, there's no room in the front of the house.
No, it goes.
It's all vehicles. It's all in the backyard?
No, it goes in the front of the house. It cuts across the driveway. There's a cut in the driveway, and it goes in front of my bottom step, and then all the way around the back, all the way to out back.
So it encompasses your entire amount of furniture?
Entire property.
I mean, yeah, property.
Yes.
Right, so the dogs can't get past them.
Correct.
When do you think you can get that?
I'll call him again tomorrow and get him to give me a definite.
Because what's going to happen is, is that the dog's going to get loose, and eventually they're going to get hit.
I've said the same thing to him. I grew up on a farm in Middleborough on Route 18, so I'm very well aware of, you know, animals and, and traffic.
Right, because I mean, it's, it's like, I would suggest until you get that done, dogs don't go out.
Right, I agree.
And if you do let them out to go do business, that they're either on a leash or on one of those runs.
Correct, right.
A dog run.
I agree.
That way, the dog cannot leave your property.
Correct.
It's time that that stops.
Yes, I agree. And I agree, and I apologize to everybody who's been bothered by it, because we've been actively trying.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter who has not had the opportunity to speak? All right, seeing that all speakers have now had the opportunity, therefore, the dangerous dog hearing is now closed, and the evidentiary record is also closed. At our next regularly scheduled meeting, solely for the purpose of determining by vote, we will then make a determin, hold on a second. Make a determination of findings. Thanks for, I'd like to thank everyone who came out. The Board of Selectmen will make a written determination, which will be complied, provided to the complainant and the dog owners, and announce that our next regularly scheduled meeting. Mr. Kane?
My only concern with that is, is, you know, the amount of time before, between now and, and that ruling, and that is, what, a couple of weeks? And I, I think really the, the discussion we heard really warrants some action tonight, I think. I don't know if that's doable or not. I don't, I don't know exactly what we can do as far as action, but I feel like something like, like Dan's recommendation would at least put an immediate stop to the dogs running. And I think that is a safety concern that maybe warrants more immediate action as, as opposed to, you know, prolonging it.
I would, so our, if the public, you can make the public aware what our exact options are.
Sure. I haven't introduced myself. I'm Peter Sumner, the town's attorney. The information that's been presented to you is for you to consider. If you feel confident that you can make a determination at now or at your next meeting, you can make that determination. A written decision will have to be issued, following any determination you make. And I would suggest that if you haven't had a chance to review all the evidence, you should take that opportunity. I know you've got a written record as well. I don't know whether you've had a chance to review it. However, you've gotten a lot of evidence tonight. If you feel confident that you can issue an interim order pending the next week's hearing tonight, you could issue an order, fashion however you see fit, to do what you believe is correct with the dogs. So, you could make a preliminary finding that the dogs are either nuisance dogs or dangerous dogs. And I can tell you what the standards are for either. A dangerous dog is a dog that either, without justification, attacks a person or domestic animal, causing physical injury or death, or behaves in a manner that a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury or death to a person or to a domestic or owned animal. An attack is defined as aggressive physical contact initiated by an animal. A nuisance dog is a dog that, by excessive barking or other disturbance as a source of annoyance to a sick person residing in the vicinity, by excessive barking, causing damage or other interference, a reasonable person would find such behavior disruptive to one's quiet and peaceful enjoyment, or has threatened or attacked livestock, a domestic animal or person, but such threat or attack was not grossly disproportionate, was not a grossly disproportionate reaction under all the circumstances. So, those are your two standards that you're judging this by. Or you could find that the dogs are neither. If you do find that they are a nuisance dog, you can issue an order that the owner or keeper of the dog take remedial action to ameliorate the cause of the nuisance behavior. If you find that they're a nuisance, or, excuse me, a dangerous dog, there are specific statutory authorizations that you can do. I'm not gonna read them verbatim. But essentially, they are that the dogs be restrained, compliant to the premises, removed from the premises, or, excuse me, when removed from the premises shall be securely humanely muzzled and restrained with a chain. That the owner or keeper of the dog provide proof of insurance, or that the owner of the dog provides to the licensing authority information by which the dog can be identified. That the, excuse me, that unless the owner or keeper of the dog provides evidence that the dog is unfit for alterations, that the dog be altered so that it's not reproductively intact, or that the dog be humanely euthanized. Those are your options for a dangerous dog. So, you do have the options to fashion a remedy that you believe is appropriate in circumstances and based upon your finding about whether the dogs are nuisance dogs, dangerous dogs, or neither.
Shaw, come on up.
I just wanted to also let you guys know that two of them are registered emotional support dogs that they're used for and do help with calming. One's a hugger, and one just keeps you busy so your brain's not occupied. One of the things. Thank you.
So, Mr. Kane, your thought process is to act this evening?
Yeah. I don't know exactly whether they fit in the dangerous or nuisance category. I think, in some ways, they're dangerous because not everybody said they're friendly, but they're dangerous in that they're just recklessly having fun. And recklessly having fun on High Street, on that corner, is pretty dangerous. You know, but that's, I don't know that that's exactly how the law reads. I think a car comes around that corner, and they're happening to be like, not paying attention, and all of a sudden, there's a dog in front of them. I mean, that corner's a hard corner. And that's, my son drives, and he's 18 years old, you know, and if he has to swerve, and there's a telephone pole there. I mean, there's just a whole lot of elderly women who walk in there, her dog. And I don't think they're a dangerous dog in the sense that they're kind of referring to, like, it's gonna come at you and hurt you. But recklessly having fun and causing some danger in doing so. You know, but in any event, I think the point is, if we can implement something like Dan said today, and then, moving forward, have time for the...
Suggestion?
You have a suggestion?
Hold on one second, because I think if we're gonna proceed down this road this evening, I think we have to determine, make a determination of the dog itself before we would impose any...
You have to make a determination about whether the dogs are nuisance dogs or dangerous dogs in order to have statutory authority to issue the interim order as to, under this statute, as to what kind of action is gonna be taken. Now, you do have bylaws, leash laws, and things like that. And, you know, you have animal control officers. You know, you have means of securing the dogs under your current laws. But if you believe that something more is warranted, I would suggest that you need to make a preliminary finding as to what the dogs constitute under the law.
And you have a recommendation about one or the other?
It's a question of fact that you, as a board, would have to make. I would say that if you are worried about a speculative injury, it may not rise to the level of a dangerous dog. And it would be more closely, because it would have to be an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury or death. A nuisance dog could be a dog that a reasonable person would find their behavior disruptive to their quiet and peaceful enjoyment. And if you find sufficient facts for that, then you could find certainly that they're a nuisance dog.
So, after hearing everything that was said this evening, I think we clearly, by the mass general law, have a, I don't believe we have a dangerous dog.
I agree.
However, we clearly have a nuisance dog. A dog that is disruptive behavior to one's quiet and peaceful enjoyment. So, as I heard somebody say, they were out in their Easter clothes, and they got jumped on. You've disrupted their day. At the point, your own animals are being chased, or they can't go outside, you've disrupted that person's quiet and peaceful enjoyment of their property. I think, from the testimony which we heard, I think it's pretty clear that, you know, I think everybody came up and said they're friendly dogs. Friendly dogs now. Puppies are generally friendly, and then they get big, and they take on their own personalities.
Well, what about the line under, because I read through this nuisance and dangerous, like, I kept reading and reading, trying to differentiate. The only thing I could come up with the dangerous is the imminent threat, which we're gonna talk about, of someone getting hurt. The imminent threat of physical injury. We have legal... We put a fracture or hit when she landed. I saw it. So, there is still an imminent threat that someone's going to get hurt.
Yeah, I got one too, when we get the electric fence. I had the electric fence, taught me to fight, dog, you play me...
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me! Mr. Lyman, can I ask you if you're familiar with the kennel? Could you come up?
Be in front of the places.
Mr. Lyman's coming up. Mr. Lyman's coming up to speak, Ms. Howe.
Oh, oh, sorry. Oh, Mr. Lyman, I'm sorry. I thought you said Laurie.
Thank you. The concern with the kennel is that the fencing that separates the individual pods is all wire link. And the dogs seem to have an innate ability to bend and pry that and either get under it or get out on the run. And they've actually done some damage in the kennel to the fencing. What I suggested about a month ago was that we consider putting plexiglass sheathing and to prevent the dog from being able to get to and pull the fencing. And I believe the plexiglass has been ordered, may even have been purchased by now, and we're just pending getting it installed, which would allow the animal control officers to take the dog and place it in the kennel. Our bylaws permit the issuance of fines when animals run loose. While we typically take a light hand on that, and we generally have people come and get them and return them home, when you have the repetitive experience that we have here, I think it would be appropriate to issue fines for violation of the leash law. There's also, and I'll defer to counsel on this, but I believe the owner of the property can also be held responsible for these issues. And that's perhaps something we ought to look into as well. But I definitely believe you have a nuisance dog here.
Can you speak on the fine portion under the bylaw?
So, you have several bylaws that address dogs. You do have a bylaw that speaks directly to disturbing the peace. Anything that your bylaw specifically prevents dogs from behaving in a manner that disturbs the quiet of the public. And you've got procedures for this type of hearing. Your bylaws permit your animal control officer to issue interim orders, restrain dogs, to catch dogs and detain them. And when folks violate your laws, you also have a leash law. When folks violate your laws, your bylaws provide for fines and penalties. For violations of the leash law, the offenses range from $30 to $100 for fines for dog bites. There are warnings, fines, and mandatory hearings under the bylaw. Dogs found in the schoolyards, there's warnings and a $50 fine. Failure to comply with an order of restraint, it's $25 under the bylaw. Failure to vaccinate, it's $100. Failure to comply with a notice to kill or confine a dog, is a fine not less than $25, and the dog can be euthanized. If you issue a order after one of these hearings, there are more significant fines provided for under statutes. I believe those range from about $500 to $1,000, but those are enforced by district court. So, you know, that's your range of options in terms of fines.
Okay. I'll take any, if the board would like to offer a suggestion.
I just agree that it's a nuisance dog, like you said.
I make a suggestion. I think what we need to do is, it's a nuisance dog. It gets out.
Well, it's a nuisance dog until we vote that it's a nuisance dog.
Right. So, it's on the owners of the owners to restrain them. And I think what we should start doing right now is where our ACO offices have been out numerous times to catch the dogs and restrain them, is if this continues, we start issuing fines until they get the job done. So, I mean, we could start with a $50 fine for each dog that is caught if it gets loose. And we have to bring it down to an animal shelter if, in fact, it is ready for it. If not, it needs to get ready ASAP by Michael. I think Mike's gonna do it. Once that's ready, and if they're running loose and either of our animal control officers capture them and bring them down to the animal shelter and lock them in, and if the owners want to retrieve the dog, it's a fine. And would you say $50 a day or $50 an animal, $50 a time? I don't know how it would work.
Well, I think we need to go back to... This board has a decision to make. Are these dangerous? Are they nuisance? There's nothing wrong. That's where we need to go right now. We don't need to think about remedies that we can't impose unless we determine...
I'll make a motion that they're a nuisance dog.
Nuisance?
Yes.
And I'll second that.
Okay.
Just for discussion, I guess, maybe a question for Peter through the chair. What are the types of remedies that we can impose on nuisance dogs that we couldn't impose on a dog that we found to be neither? Is there some other step, you know? I know in the past, we've found dogs to not be nuisance or dangerous dogs, but ask them to work with the ACOs to keep them confined or wear a muzzle in the interim. And then, if there's no other issues, just kind of let it be.
So, the statute authorizes you to issue an order that the owner or keeper of the dog take remedial action, excuse me, take remedial action to ameliorate the cause of the nuisance behavior. That can be a general order, similar to what you just described, you know, work with the ACO, make sure these dogs aren't getting out. Or it can have more specifics. You know, I know that the owners of these dogs have indicated there are several things that they intend to do. Certainly, if you, you know, after hearing from your animal control officer, believe that any of those are the right things to do, you could fashion an order that specifically directs them to take those actions. It doesn't have to be something that they aren't already planning to do. Or it could be something else specific that is necessary to ameliorate the nuisance. So, I'm gonna try to quit saying that word, I'm about to stumble over it. But I think that you have some discretion here to fashion an order that's appropriate for these dogs.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second to deem the dogs a nuisance dog. I'll go by voice vote since it's a hearing. Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. We've determined they're a nuisance dog. Obviously, we need to stop this behavior of the dogs getting out.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, I think I'd point out either order or clarification. Do we have to declare the individual dogs nuisance dogs, or just the collective four dogs?
I understood that the vote to be about all four dogs, each of them.
So, now, what does the town impose to remedy? Because I think beyond just the vote of nuisance dog is actually ending the behavior is what we're trying to get to, right?
I'm not so concerned about the fines right now. I mean, certainly, moving forward, that could be an issue for me. But I'm more concerned with that the dogs are safe and people are, you know, able to go about their days. I think that when they're walking right now, when they're outside the home right now, and they don't have a suitable space out back that has been inspected by the dog officers. So, there's an interim period of time where, if they leave the house, they should be properly, maybe muzzled and on a leash, or maybe the muzzle's not surrounded, but on a leash, until we get word from the animal control officers that they have inspected a kennel, and the kennel is gonna hold them.
So, obviously, we have a leash law in town. That they should be on a leash if they're out being walked, period. Hold on.
The leash law doesn't apply to the yard.
Well, I'm getting to that. Thank you, though. So, we also heard them say that they had purchased runs, that they had four runs. And make it up to them that so, if we, I would entertain a motion that we impose that if the dog is outside of the yard, must be on a leash. Inside the yard, must be on a run or in a fixed leash to deter them getting out of their own yard. Does that sound like...
I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
I would suggest, instead, just, outside the yard, obviously, be leashed. But inside the yard, just work with the animal control officer to remediate the situation. I don't think we need to be as specific as set up a run, change the fence, get the electric fence, because there are other remedies that they're working on.
Honestly, I wasn't convinced that they themselves could come up with a solution that was going to work. And I think the solution that will work is if the dog's on a leash, you know. I'm even a little bit hesitant about the run. But if they have a run, and they're on the leash on the run, that's fastened. That, to me, feels like a bit of a compromise.
I agree on that because we've heard that they've jumped over the back fence. So, being on a run, they can't jump over the fence. They can, you know, so...
So, can I just talk on the idea of the run? Granted, I think it would work. But in Massachusetts, there's tethering laws which prevent you from being able to tether the dog outside for more than 15 minutes at a time. I think there's also wordage in that law that says you can't deem them to be tethered because it's against other laws in Massachusetts. So, you can put them on a leash. We just can't necessarily require them to be tethered because that would be requiring to do something that's not legal in the state of Massachusetts.
So can I ask Joe a question? So that means like, say you run like a clothesline, right?
Yeah.
Like a run. And a dog can run up and down, but it can't get out of the yard. You can't do that?
So you can use like the clothesline kind of technique?
Yeah.
You can do that. You can't have them to a fixed object for more than 15 minutes. So if you put them on like a stake and you put a cable out there, you can't do that.
Like from tree to tree or something?
Yeah, if you do like a tree to tree thing with a run, you can legally do that. They have to have like shelters and stuff, each dog in there, yeah.
But I mean, I would think something like that while the dog is outside during the weather and there's always somebody home. But once a person leaves the house, I don't think they should leave the dog out there all by themselves. You bring them in the house.
Yeah, I think what Mr. Kane was saying was whereas if they were like taken out of the house and walked on a leash intermediately until we had kennels set up or we had a more permanent solution, that would be better, which is, I know like what Mr. Evans was saying, it's not requiring as much. But it's requiring that leash law, it's like that one-on-one interaction. That's the human element to keep these dogs contained for, until we have a more permanent solution. As opposed to putting them out on a run or something where something else could happen.
I think if we do that.
Do you want us to get the electric fence?
I realize that nobody here is an animal behavior specialist, and I apologize that I didn't bring one with me. But I have worked with dogs my entire life. Runs should be illegal. If you look up a run, it creates an aggressive dog. At this moment, that's not what we have, and they're extremely dangerous because they break free, even the most supportive ones. They do not take very much to break them. That rips around and it. It's very dangerous.
I would just ask you what your solution, what you.
My solution is, and I'm willing to do it tomorrow morning, even though it's school vacation and Joe had given me the day off. But I will go, they need a secure bottom and they need a secure top. These dogs are not going to chew their way out in the amount of time. They could even use, do you know those, it's like the pallets? They could even put that on the bottom of wood and make it solid, but use the pallet as a base because they're not going to dig through the wood either. If they were left unattended, they would. Joe is absolutely right about the tethering laws, which make a lot of what you're saying null and void, if that's what I was trying to say. But the aggression behavior, these animals, I don't think they're going to give up. And they're going to move to another town eventually. And I would hate to create, I would hate to create aggression in the animals. I absolutely agree they have to stay safe. Mr. Lyman is correct. As soon as Mary Beth Carter took over, her and Dan entered the facility. And I don't know what the holdup is, but I realize with COVID and pandemic, there's shortage of supplies, whatever. If we had secure kennels, just one, because they have to stay together. The anxiety of these dogs, because Frank is right, when I held all four, we had them for almost a week before I got their rabies done by a vet that could come out. Nobody got injured. Nobody tried to escape in one large kennel. The second I got two in, they broke out with me there within 20 minutes of two secure enclosures that was just put in by Alexis a few years ago, as well as our facility itself. And putting, you know, any type of mark or scar on the dog is a very dangerous thing to happen to the town as a municipality. So Joe and I are looking for a way to work with everyone so that we can do our job diligently. This should not be happening. But I need a secure facility, and Frank is correct, that is in place to be done, just not done yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on a second. We actually ended the hearing, the public portion. I appreciate everyone's comments, but we're just going to, until a solution is actually, an immediate solution is brought forward by this board. So if anyone on the board has an immediate solution, I'd like to hear it now.
I just think they have to be on a leash, whether it's outside their property or on their property if they're outside the house, until the animal control officers have okayed a kennel that is secure.
I like that.
And electric fence has been installed.
By whatever means that they.
Yeah, whatever means, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Okay, so.
Will send a letter to that.
We haven't, you got that motion here, all right. So what the motion just came down is, long and the short of it, until animal control has deemed your facility okay to put the dogs outside into the kennel area, your dogs must remain on a leash at any time they go out of the house. And we have deemed the dogs nuisance dogs by the behavior that's gone on for the last several months.
I have a question today, too.
Thank you. So what is the leash attached to?
A person.
A person.
A person.
A person's hand. But they.
It's not, it's not going to, and they don't, these dogs aren't walked. This is how, I don't know much about dogs, but they're not walked. They don't care about taking care of the dogs. They're not walked, so that's not a solution.
So we have a motion and a second for implemented action. Excuse me, folks. This will be over in a second. You can go outside and talk in one second. We just have to get through the hearing. I'm trying to get an immediate solution that if not followed, they will, animal control will take the dog. And it's not bring it right back so the same behavior can go on incessantly from month after month after month. We have a motion and a second that the dogs must be leashed until ACO approves their outside kennel. Beyond that, we will start imposing fines and we should seek alternative recommendations of where these dogs are taken if they get out again until a kennel is approved by. This shouldn't be, they're out again, bring them back, they're out again. Something needs to be done if it's a matter of Mary Beth or Mr. Lyman, finding an alternative facility to house these animals if the repeated behavior goes on. But it need ultimately, we're here to stop this behavior tonight because ever since I got elected, I've always said it's the quality of life issues that impact people the most. And this is a quality, when you can't enjoy your own backyard and you can't walk outside, it's an issue. It's gone on far too long and we need to stop it. So if they're not on a leash, if animal control gets called again, they're in, they'll be in violation of what the board imposed, we need to take the dog until their kennel and between the interim ATA and the town administrator, we'll find ulterior accommodations until their kennel is actually brought up to a proper level. So we have a motion and a second regarding being leashed anytime they're out of the house. And beyond that, I think we've given pretty clear direction to animal control.
I have a question, if I may. Sorry. But if, in fact, they do get out again and.
We're going to take the dogs, Dan.
We're going to take the dogs, all right. How are we going to find them?
Excuse me? We just deemed them nuisance dogs. That's how we do that, yeah, under the statute.
I agree with you, but Joe and I cannot go to their home. We are not.
No, no, when you find them outside on the street, outside of their yard.
And just so you understand, because I know that a lot of people have spoke, these dogs do not come to us anymore. They go right back home and I cannot walk past their curving.
Okay, I'll go back home.
So.
Okay.
I think we know what we're going to do, all right? So we have the motion, second, we need to vote it. Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, thank you. That concludes our hearing this evening. I don't think so, do we? I don't.
Nope, you're all set.
Thank you.
No, I think that was a thank you, Peter.
They want to draft up a fine matrix for the ACOs, though.
Thank you.
Thank you. Makes so familiar.
Oh, yeah, John lives on High Street.
Well, it's nice to meet you, Ryan.
Is that like last December?
So they're ignoring it for five months.
Subbing out one page.
Yep.
Replacement pages.
Do it the best. Okay. It's page five of six of 17.
Do I just take a recess?
I'm going to take a five-minute recess and we'll return. We will come back momentarily.
Give Ryan a chance to put the graphic up.
Thank you, Chief. All right, because we've had some people patiently waiting, we're gonna discuss the Whitman Middle School debt exclusion. I assume we're gonna finally have a vote of a date this evening. Did you guys have a presentation?
Brett Small, eighty-seven Hilltop Road, also the chair of the Whitman Middle School Building Committee. One thing that has come to light, that I believe you folks have received the email, that our project manager, Colliers, as well as the architect, AI Three. Whenever the original timeline was presented, it was all culminating October of this year. So that's what their contract runs to, is the October-November timeline. They have said that if there was a delay, they haven't come around and said, hey, we're gonna charge you, or we'll do additional funds. They wanna hang in, 'cause as they've told me, we want the project after the fact. That's what the goal is. However, if we were running out, you know, three, four months later, it may become an issue that there would be some additional cost there as well. Mr. Galvin had proposed the October thirtieth special town meeting, followed by a ballot vote on November fourth, which would get us a resolution right in line with their timeline, right in line with what a normal presidential election would be. It would, you know, perhaps not be the beautiful hot weather of May that I know we're gonna get. But I think we could look forward to some decent weather in November, and most certainly not have to worry about if we delayed until the January timeline, the fact that we could have an inclement weather day that may prevent people from coming out. And I think everyone's on the same page. The goal is to have as many folks that want to get out to the polls and vote be able to do so. And I wholeheartedly believe that October-November timeline would work to that effect. And I would beg for your consideration for that. Thank you.
All right, Beth, do you wanna?
The only comment that I have in speaking with the town clerk is if we went ahead with the October and November election time, we would be setting those dates before the meeting, October twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth or so. So if we were to cancel, we would still have to come to town meeting and then hopefully have enough to cancel. But we couldn't prevent the ballot from going forward in November. You would still have to hold the election anyway if, for some reason, things didn't go through October twenty-fifth, sixth.
John Galvin, forty-one, High Street, member of the Whitman Building Committee. In speaking with the Colliers, the project manager, we would not be attending this meeting unless, in which is their meeting, the MSBA is meeting October twenty-sixth, I believe, or twenty-fifth. We would not be attending that meeting if we were not all set. This is not something that they're gonna look at and say, oh, no, you gotta fix this, 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 and this. This is a meeting where everything is in order. It's pretty much a congratulatory move forward. So we would be taken off the agenda if we were not, weeks before that meeting, if we were not in proper place to move forward on that date from the MSBA.
If, in fact, October, the special town, the special town meeting in October thirty-first, that Monday, say we don't get a quorum, or we need a quorum, or it doesn't pass, we still have that election?
Correct. Still have the election. And if it passes at the ballot, then you have one year in which to allocate those funds to the project again, or another like project.
So it doesn't make any difference if it passes or doesn't pass at the special town meeting, it's still on the board?
It's still on the ballot. However, they can't go forward with it where they don't have a town meeting. They'd have to have a subsequent town meeting. But the funds are good for just a short period of time.
Okay, okay. So you want a motion?
Mr. Lam?
Did I hear October thirty-first?
Thirtieth.
Oh, okay. My question's.
Can I make a?
All right, and we are. So I also kinda wanna relate this to another project, that we will not have full schematic designs, right, by November fourth, right? Buildable.
You have schematic?
Buildable.
No, and those wouldn't come until after funds have been allocated, 'cause we're not paying for those designs as of yet.
Ah.
They are part of the entire project, so to speak.
So the process would be on the thirtieth, we're approving the schematic design phase. Then it takes a whole nother year for them to do the construction plans. Once those construction plans are done, it would be then that next, like a year later, that those construction plans would go out to bid to the contractors. We will have a estimate from an independent estimator from the schematic plans, which is much further along than where the last estimate that we got. So, you know, we will have, you know, a whole year's worth of additional drawings that will get estimated by an independent estimator.
My point was just being that we would not have buildable plans when we vote this, which I know is a concern also for another.
That's correct.
No matter what the timetable was in, with any MSBA project, you would never have those buildable plans when you're voting to go to a town meeting and then a debt exclusion vote. Just, it just doesn't happen. We will have a lot of things narrowed down. Net zero, for instance, I know that's something near and dear to Justin's heart. That'll be coming up next week in our meeting. So the schematic design phase will pretty much lay out everything. We just won't have where the wall switches are, where the outlets are, you know, all the buildable items. And then you would have your bid documents go out, you know, a year later, and all right, get building.
Okay, all right. If anyone would like to?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I think that's similar to the conversation that came up at our last meeting with the DPW. You wouldn't have those plans until after town meeting, when it's approved.
All right.
So I would like to make a motion that we call for a special town meeting on Monday, October thirtieth, followed up by a special election on Saturday, November fourth.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
Makes sense to me.
All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Yes.
My wife's here for birthday present.
What, is it gonna be a new middle school?
All right, next up under new business, act on license renewals for the following license holders. License holders for the period, May first, twenty-twenty-three, through April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, subject to the submission of renewal paperwork, renewal fees, and current tax status. List is as follows. Fuel storage license. Whitman burial vault engineering, Stop &amp; Shop Company, TMC Realty DBA carries, Jiffy Lube International, Whitman Middle School, Department of Public Works, CJ Realty Trust under Joe Secconi, Conley School, Bullet Realty doing business as TK Asphalt Services, Duval School, Trillium Fuel doing business as Whitman Gas, OM South Avenue LLC, AL Prime Energy Consultants, Cumberland Farms, Inc., and MKPM Whitman LLC doing business as New World.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Next class, junk collectors licensed, Joe Secconi, Joe Secconi and Sons, Inc., one oh six Essex Street, Environmental Pickup Corp. doing business as Conway Scrap Metal, thirty-six Vincent Street.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Junk dealers licensed, Joseph Secconi, Jay Secconi and Sons, Inc., one oh six Essex Street, Whitman Furniture, three fifty-six South Avenue, Unit C.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Next item, act on the request of Roger Hendricks, commander of the Whitman VFW, post six ninety-seven, hold the one fifty-fifth Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Act on the request of Homestead Harvest, Liz Wilson, for a one-day liquor license on the premises located at thirty Temple Street, Unit C, for the following events. May seventh, twenty-twenty-three, a pasta-making class with charcuterie spread and wine, twelve-person event from four to seven P.M. May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, a cookie decorating event with charcuterie spread and wine, serving fourteen to sixteen people from four P.M. to seven P.M. June fourth, twenty-twenty-three, a craft event with food and wine, fourteen people, from four P.M. to seven P.M. And June twenty-fifth, a women's networking event with professional headshots, event including food and wine, sixteen to twenty people, from four P.M. to seven P.M.
So moved.
Second.
Have a question.
Any discussion on that?
Yeah, on this here, they need a license for one-day liquor license for each of these pro?
Yes, that's what we're approving.
Okay. That's it, till I have a question.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Set the next meeting schedule, obviously, May first. And then do you wanna do the sixteenth? Or do you wanna wait until?
Oh, the reorg would be the twenty-third?
Yes.
So the twenty, so the first and the twenty-third?
First and the twenty-third.
I guess for, maybe a question for Mary Beth. How does May look? Do we, can we take that big of a gap between meetings?
At this time, I think we probably could.
If we need to amend.
That's what I mean, if we need to have one sooner than.
One and twenty-three, then.
Okay.
Okay. All business, FY twenty-four budget, Mary Beth?
Yes, so as many of you know, today we met and had a joint meeting with the Town of Hanson and the School Committee and the Town of Whitman, and they certified a new budget assessment, Whitman operating budget for the Town of Whitman at seventeen million, seven hundred thirty-nine thousand, four hundred fifty dollars. So we did put that number, that new number, into Article Two, and we are requesting that the board does actually vote the town meeting warrant, so that we can make sure that we get that posted in time for the meeting on May first. Having this new assessment actually did cause us to use one-time funds in the amount of, let me just get that figure for you. It's four hundred and fifty-five dol, four hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred twenty-three dollars. But I just wanted to confirm that amount for sure. Four hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred twenty-three dollars.
Three hundred twenty-three?
Three hundred and twenty-three, from free cash to close the gap and balance the budget. We came to a compromise, and I am just happy that we were able to use one-time funds and not have to lay off our employees. But we do need the warrant to be voted this evening, and Article Two is built right in to the warrant, as it was last year as well.
Okay. Before I seek a motion on the warrant and the budget as presented, for anybody who was watching four hours ago, to recap the joint meeting, I commend all boards. It was a very difficult budget season, probably more than most. But I think ultimately, all boards from Hanson, Whitman, and the School Committee did the right thing for the community as a whole, for service, protecting services, both educational and town services. So I would thank the members of the Hanson Board, the Hanson Select Board, and the School Committee and Administration. I would now seek a motion to approve the annual warrant, including Article Two. And with the motion seconded, we'll further discussion if needed.
Our motion?
Second.
Discussion.
I think I can probably clear up some anxiety. So on the DPW building, last week, as a member of the Capitol Committee on Thursday, there was a unanimous vote to recommend, including myself as the select representative. My concerns were, I'm still a little concerned with what we promised Town Meeting last year, but I think that is kind of an unrealistic, I think it's a mistake that we made last year, not this year. So, that's what it is. I obviously support, you know, I know that they need the building. I have no concerns with the plan as presented. My only, only hang-up last week was whether or not we're delivering what we told Town Meeting last year we would. But I think that was sort of an overpromise more than a under-delivered situation.
Mr. Kane?
On the same topic, I, through Mary Beth Connor, reached out to the architects to get some feedback on, like, asked them just some questions about the concerns I had, and they provided some really thorough answers and definitely relieved my concerns, so.
Any further discussion? Okay. This is a, needs to be a two-thirds vote, correct, Frank? Adoption of the warrant?
Majority vote for the warrant.
Okay. Majority vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, next up under all business, discuss process of approving executive session minutes.
Yes. Currently, we have a substantial backlog in executive meeting minutes. Frank would like to offer his suggestion on bringing the backlog current. And I would like to establish a process whereby any executive session meeting minutes that occur in a given month be reviewed and voted in a subsequent month's executive session meeting. I'd like to suggest that any of these executive session minutes that were taken in April, the month of April, be voted in the month of May. And that vote does have to occur in executive session. And then we'll vote any minutes as completed for the backlog as they become available. But I think Frank did wanna, did you wanna speak on that at all?
Considering I was here for three years of those minutes, I feel a certain responsibility for bringing it forward and getting it on even keel. So I would like to offer, to assist in this process as a volunteer, not as a paid employee, to gather and bring those minutes forward so that they can be both reviewed and redacted where necessary for when they may request to be released. That's something that can be reviewed whenever the minutes are questioned. So with, working with Mary Beth, we'll define a template that'll help to allow us to do that if and when executive minutes are requested.
But we had thought, rather than trying to catch everything up and then the current ones are going behind, let's just start on a go-forward basis with anything current, the subsequent month, the next month. the subsequent month, the next month, we'll vote those, and then we'll fill in as the minutes get caught up.
What I would look at is, we would probably bring a series of minutes for review and vote whenever you're going to be doing an executive session, rather than making it onerous, I would think that somewhere between 10 and 15 minutes, sets of minutes, as opposed to time, be presented each meeting.
In batches. That makes sense.
And I guess just for anyone who watches the meeting, that you regularly hear us, you know, approve meeting minutes. The difference for an executive session minutes is under certain mass general law statutes, either the person that we're talking about has privilege, or there may be information that cannot be disclosed to the public, so they do take more time to be redacted and reviewed, that we are not violating any mass general law. All right.
Just, that all sounds great, I just, I think you should be compensated first time.
Nice to send that to you.
Yeah, boy, you would have to do that as a volunteer, I think. Compensating, that kind of work is.
Do 100 hours, you get your taxes reduced.
Put them on the senior work.
Put you on a senior work program.
I'm sure we can work something out to handle that. All right. Town administrators report.
Just a couple of things. Each of you should have a memorandum that was placed in your packages from the town clerk, Don Farley, and she would like you to appoint the following town meeting checkers for the May 1st, 2023 annual town meeting. Anne Marie Holbrook of One Paradise Lane, Unit J1, Betty Jean Conrad, 79 in Deion Trail, Leanne Valancourt, 877 Auburnville Way, Unit G2, and Carol O'Brien, 48 Alden Street, Number 1. And she will notify them, please notify them to report to the town hall at 6:15 p.m., and we need to let Don know if they cannot work this meeting, but she has that on that memo, but we just need to really appoint those checkers.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
And the only other item is an update from the regional agreement committee. And Justin?
Yeah, I can take that. So at our last regional agreement committee meeting, we, every group brought their suggestions back. If you remember, there weren't a lot of contentious issues. The ones that we discussed the most were the ones that I would like to bring back to this board with what that board recommended. So on the two-thirds vote, we discussed converting it to more of a financial, taking two-thirds votes on only major financial matters, which we really even then consolidated down to only voting to change the assessment methodology. So, that's right, Mary Beth, right, we kind of narrowed down just the one topic?
Yes.
Okay. So in that case, if anyone remembers back in 2020, when we voted to go to the statutory method, there was this really weird school committee vote where a simple majority changed the assessment methodology, but then it took a two-thirds majority to vote that assessment. This would kind of close that gap. So, voting to change the assessment would take the same vote it would to certify a budget at that assessment. So, just wanted to bring that back to the board. The change is my opinion of it. I was concerned with some of the weird hang-ups with it, so I don't know if anyone else had feedback on that.
I just, so I'm sorry to jump in, but I did watch the school committee meeting when they discussed this, and I did appreciate one of the Hanson, and I had not previously thought about this, one of the Hanson selectmen, I thought at the time brought up a good point that as Whitman as a majority could technically vote a change if that pendulum did swing. I think a two-thirds vote to change the assessment method is a very strong act of goodwill, that I think would go a long way. Do you want to vote on that, a consensus?
I think it's just a consensus.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, that's definitely to take back, and if it were, I don't know, we didn't really define major financial matters, so I'll take it back as the assessment methodology. And then the last is the language around emergency repairs. So we went back with some suggested language changes. The rest of the board was okay with specifying that the town administrator shall be notified. Hanson doesn't have a facilities director, so they suggested we not include that language. They did kind of take issue with the no obligation to pay without prior authorization because the act of taking something to town meeting is kind of implicitly, you need, you can't kind of condition payment without, because it's going to be voted at a meeting anyway. So it was kind of a weird hang-up, and they felt that it's an emergency. If it's an emergency, they notify the town administrator. They agree that it's an emergency, they should be able to spend the money. So that was the only change. Again, kind of satisfied my concerns, but I wanted to get your opinions.
I mean, if it's an emergency, it's emergency. That's what they use their ANDD account for, right, for a specialty. And then, but town administrator needs to, regardless of which town it is, needs to be notified, and they need to be aware that it is an emergency, and I think if that's the case, we should be able to send one of our people down there to look at it, you know? And take a look and see, in fact, is it an emergency?
So that was where they didn't want to codify that, because if there was something truly catastrophic and they wanted to start repairing right away, they didn't want to have to wait for a town administrator facilities director to get over to the building to look at it and confirm, yes, this is an emergency.
Talking about a couple, an hour, half an hour. I mean, you get a hold of, you get a hold of our facility manager, and he gets down there and looks at it, right, and advises a town administrator, yes, in my opinion, it is an emergency. Right? I mean, a second opinion.
Advice on this?
Sure.
If something is an emergency, you have an obligation to act immediately, to remediate it. If the circumstance was such that it was a large sum of money and the board was uncomfortable issuing a go-ahead for that, you can always go to the director of accounts under Chapter 41 and seek a authorization for emergency spending. It's not a complicated process. It takes a half a day to a day to get an approval, but most of the emergencies I've seen were common sense. If it's December and the boiler breaks, yeah, you got to.
Oh, yeah, understandable, yeah.
I've seen some that one would like to think was emergencies, but really were just not that exigent. A situation like the driveway in the back of the Duval School was one example where I went out and looked at it and said, no, you got to bring it to town meeting. There's no danger here. It's very shabby, but, you know.
It was done anyway.
So it's common sense, and the town administrator will always notify the board of that request, and it's really a matter of immediate judgment. And it's, yeah, go ahead and fix it. Mould was a really good example.
And I think there should be some type of an avenue where our facility manager, right?
We have a facility manager. He should be involved if it's facility-related.
Right. Those are basically town buildings.
Yep.
You know.
Well, it could be the high school, too.
Yeah, but it's not really our specific building.
Nine times out of 10, it's going to be a facility issue. There may be an occasion where the emergency requires something other than facility improvement, but just keep an open mind and let the town administrator do a job.
And watching that meeting, I just thought that it was what we were classifying an emergency, that an emergency should be impacts.
Yeah.
The school day, or would prevent.
Education for people at risk.
Right.
So their definition of an emergency is, "An emergency repair shall be defined as an unexpected repair, not covered by insurance, costing greater than $10,000, that poses an immediate impact or risk to the safety of the district's students, staff, or threatens the operations of a school building." That was their definition. I thought it was reasonable.
It's reasonable.
Yeah, "In the event of an emergency repair, the school district shall maintain the appropriate, the district shall maintain the appropriate member town or town that owns the building as soon as practical," I think it was, notify, and we asked them to add town administrator, which they were okay with. So they'll notify the town administrator as soon as practical, but no later than within 72 hours of having knowledge of need for the emergency repair. That was kind of where we took issue. It was, let us know right away, but if it's an emergency, it's an emergency. I don't think that we need to really quabble over how and when they notify us, as long as it's as soon as practical.
Do you think there should be an item in that regional agreement where a facility director in either town has a right to look at their own town buildings?
Well, so at present, Hanson doesn't have a facilities director, and I think that notifying the town administrator kind of serves that. Mary Beth would probably call Todd if it was a facilities issue anyway.
Right. But I mean, to look, to examine the buildings on a regular basis, so we're not all of a sudden.
Oh, I see what you mean, for, not for emergency issues, but for like maintenance type stuff.
Yeah, just to be aware of what's going on and maybe give some advice if he sees an issue, so that all of a sudden, the issue isn't over $10,000, but it was a $500 issue that could be repaired and not let go.
The schools have their own facilities department. In the past, we've worked very well with Ernie Salin, who was the most recent one, haven't gotten to know the.
Tim Holly.
Tim Holly yet, but, you know, Ernie was a regular at the Capitol Committee meetings, presenting their, their matrix, their facilities plans. I kind of expect the same relationship going forward, and Todd sits on that committee, so I'm sure there'll be something working there.
I still think we should have a hand in at the raw buildings.
To a point.
Yeah.
The lease actually gives them certain control, but, all right. Does that exhaust the agenda? I would seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.